Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. It is Tuesday, October 14th, 2025. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Minutes report received and filed.
We do not have any this week.
I will like to, would like to turn in the indirect cost study report we had done by Maximus, so like a copy to the clerk.
Okay. Commissioner Committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events.
We have planning commission meeting tonight. Quarterly reports are due tomorrow. HBA's got a Build My Future event tomorrow. It's a one-day interactive construction career day for high schoolers out at the fairgrounds. There's a Renegade Media event. I don't think we'll make it by there because we've got too many things going on, so. Something about that date, too, is somebody's birthday. You still having birthdays or did you cancel them now?
I'm starting to go backwards. I'm counting backwards.
Well, you need to, my golly. Thursday, I got a, is there LEPC meeting, Sheriff? Got that on the, if there still is. JCMO birthday bash downtown. Monday, I have a flu shot clinic, I think it's up here, and then Board Railter Political and Economic Responsibility Committee meeting. I think that's about it.
Well, you've taken some of my things off the calendar there, but I do have a, I think I have a meeting this afternoon with Architects Alliance on the juvenile facility, Thursday Law, LEPC. That's it.
Okay. Well, yeah, Wednesday, I'm gonna try to attend the Renegade's press conference at 10:00. And then we've got a 9/11, it's the 25th anniversary of 9/11 next year, so we've got a committee that's working on something to remember it by. Thursday, traffic and safety out at Eric's. I've got 250th committee meeting that evening. Friday's the Chamber Leadership Forum. And then Friday afternoon is the opening ceremony of the Jefferson City Bicentennial. And I will be opening that because the Cole County Court on November 7th, 1825, Incorporated Jefferson City. And since the mayor's not here, I get to be the speaker on us incorporating Jefferson City. So Saturday is the St. Mary's Heritage Festival. They've got a ribbon cutting at 10:00. And then that's all I have. So, okay. Then we have presentation from invited guests, and we were supposed to have Cooper Childers from Senator Hawley's office, but he could not make it, so we have Sarah Williams from Congressman Onder's office. So Sarah, would you like to say anything about? We must go to office signs to shut down.
Um, well, that's what actually brings me here. First and foremost, I wanted to be here, Congressman Onder wanted to be here to hear from the county, to make sure anything that's going on is impacting you all to hear and follow up on a few inquiries that we have from the county and just break that full circle. But as Commissioner, sorry, I want to call you by your first name. As Commissioner Bushman stated, we are going into the third week of the government shutdown. Congressman Onder and other members of Congress did pass a clean continuing resolution on September the 19th. The proverbial line in the sand has been drawn. The countered amended CR would result in approximately around $2 billion in spending on illegal immigrants and other non-citizens over the next, over the course of the next decade, which is enough money and funding that would support the children's health insurance program for that same period. It would also repeal reforms that strengthen American healthcare. It would repeal a generational $50 billion investment in rural healthcare and take away HSAs from approximately around 10 million Americans. But again, first and foremost, I wanted to be here to hear from the county, to answer any questions and to hear from the county.
Got a question.
Yes.
So my son's active duty in the United States Marine Corps. I heard something about maybe they'll pass something to get the military paid. Is that true?
Uh, that is my understanding. I was following up on that this morning. I didn't get a chance to verify and see, but President Trump and the administration did use some appropriated funding to support active militaries and today troops. In addition, I believe that also will pay the salaries for other federal judicial law enforcement officers. And then also another push to extend and to continue the WIC program. That is something that is in the works.
Thank you.
Well, I think my understanding, there's like $8 billion that they had set aside for research that they're going to use to, to pay our military on the 15th, so. That's what I heard on the press, from the press.
Yes, and I just haven't had a chance to verify all that. That is my understanding. I'll follow back up with you.
Okay, yeah, I appreciate that.
Of course.
Yeah, and if any elected officials or department heads do have some issues, they can, they can reach out to Sarah, too. She's, you know, her office just across the street, so we know where to find her. Okay, anything else?
No, sir.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, any Commission comments? Bids and contracts, approval and signing of MDFB tax credit disbursement request number four from the soccer club.
This is again, just transfers in and out of the county.
That's his baby.
Oh, that's your baby.
I had it on the computer because you've tested it to the meeting.
Oh.
Good job.
Sometimes I remember.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve and sign the form for the dispersalment request number four for the Cole County, Cole County, Missouri, United Capital City Soccer Club.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the Firehouse Grants Application.
Since you guys an email, we found out about this grant. It was a quick turnaround. It's electronic submission, so there's really nothing for you to sign. We did go ahead and put in for it. However, I made a form so that, you know, you guys can feel good about signing stuff because I mean, like that. This is for SWAT, this is for SWAT equipment. It's about $38,000, little over $38,845, so.
Thank you, Sheriff. Maybe you could just mention who this is from and what they do and what they do every year, apparently.
So this is Firehouse Subs. They have a grant program that they do for public safety. EMS recently got a grant. I think we got one. I don't know, Public Works may be eligible for some of this money, too, so, but it's something to keep your eye on. And if you get an opportunity to help Firehouse Subs out, you should do so because they do good stuff for the community.
I'll make a motion to approve the submission of the electronic grant, Firehouse Subs Public Safety Grant for SWAT Communication Equipment.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the discussion of 2025-29 towing and storage of motor vehicles, RFP.
We bid out the towing and storage of motor vehicles for the Sheriff's Department, and we only had the one vendor submit a response. Our recommendation is going to be to reject the bid 2025-29. The Sheriff's Department currently does rotation with multiple towing agencies around the county, and it's cheaper to do that rotation than it would be to award this bid. But we do want to try to run it again, an RFP again, to see if we can get some more competitive pricing.
Sheriff mentioned her button timeline on there for the towing, so that...
Yeah, I missed it. It's, Kublo missed it, so.
Is that a response time?
Yeah, the response time.
So I think that was kind of more of a reason to reject it than anything.
Yeah.
So.
Yes.
We might as well have that on there, don't we?
Yeah.
Well, maybe we could award the bid and they don't have to show up. So, yeah, I think we need that on the contract. I believe I missed it.
We all overlooked it.
Yeah, I don't have the, I mean, that's not a problem to me, however you want to do that. There's other options except the bids, and then you don't have a timeline, so. And these are for evidence, our vehicle, it's everything countywide, too. It's not just for cars parked and abandoned or whatever.
Yeah, it's pretty extensive, RFP.
So, so you're recommending?
Reject it.
Reject them and rebid. Okay, good. I'll make the motion to reject the towing and storage of motor vehicles, RFP.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I don't see Chief Floyd here.
I just speak up for him. He said to give me all this money.
Well, this is the approval and sign of an EMT clinical agreement with Lincoln University, so.
I just want money.
And I think we'll, we'll move that towards the end and hopefully he will be here.
We'll be the call for service, right? He's up here, so he will still be on that call.
Do we have the agreement? Do you have it or have you seen it or is this?
I have it. I should. You haven't had me. I'm just wondering if Eric might want to present it instead.
Yeah, I think, I think we'll kind of move him down towards the end and hopefully he will.
If he asks me to, I would, but he may want to talk about it.
If he's not here by the end of the meeting, we just go ahead and address it.
Yeah. Okay, new business, accounts payable review.
I'd ask for approval of accounts payable pending review.
Make a motion to approve accounts payable pending review.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the Missouri State Tax Commission per parcel reimbursement.
Just a notice or a mention of a phone call that I made to Larry Jones at the State Tax Commission last week, and I asked if the County Assessment Fund would be receiving the per parcel payment from the State Tax Commission, which was sort of in limbo because of the failures of the previous assessor to follow the memorandum of understanding which he signed. And according to Mr. Jones, the state, he has approved the payment. It is in the works. The Assessment Fund will receive approximately $117,000 from the State Tax Commission for the per parcel work was done.
Good.
Doesn't take a vote, maybe just a note that the check is on, is in the mail. How about that?
Okay. So who is speaking on the Missouri State Tax Commission? Sorry, that's what you were just talking about. Okay, we got that. Then the Assessor's Office to present occupancy and change in value reports.
There should be three spreadsheets in your packets. One is for occupancy properties, which are new single-family homes that need to be added to the tax rolls on a prorated basis. Another is for natural disaster properties. This contains one house that was destroyed by fire in July, so that needs to be prorated for 2025 also. And then last is a spreadsheet that consists almost entirely of requests for value adjustments on properties that increased in value after the additional 5% in value was added per STC order. Almost all are properties that had changes since the 2023 tax year, which is the year that our vendor base increases in most cases, which resulted in incorrect values on these properties. And some of the changes since 2023 include split properties, demolitions, removal of manufactured homes or outbuildings, things of that nature. So basically, we're just kind of taking things back to where they needed to be based upon the changes that occurred since 2023.
Not that this is necessary, but these are rather small changes.
Right.
And is there a total somewhere of what was assessed and what will be, what the new number is?
I can take, do that for you.
Okay.
But it's for, I don't know, 30, 40 properties, but doesn't seem anything over $3,000 or
$4,000 to me.
Right, yeah. Yeah, I can get that together.
Okay. Bye. I don't know if we do this in three different motions or not, you know? If not, I would make the motion to accept the Assessor's schedules for the adjustments as proposed in the three spreadsheets. One's marked natural disasters. The other one, other two.
Occupancy and any other.
Due to, let's fill in the blank here.
Um, due to values that should be rolled back to previous based upon changes since the base year of 2023, debt net based, the 5% increases almost all on property's value and situation of 2023. So if a property split off or house was demolished or a fire occurred or something like that, that would not have been taken, have taken into effect on the values we're trying to.
I think these are occupancy.
Your homes.
So, yeah, you can do the, I think disaster, go along with your motion, the natural disasters, occupancy, and how don't we just call these change in value?
Yeah, value adjustments or...
Take what you said, just change it to change in value. Run the motion. That works for you, Tom.
Where I was about to say, fill in the blank, the following would go, natural disasters, occupancy.
Occupancy properties.
Occupancy.
Properties.
Properties.
And value adjustment properties.
Perfect. All right, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, Tom, next thing, you gotta bring us a recommended motion.
All right. I'm just teasing. I'm just teasing.
Thank you.
We would miss that, though.
Okay. First reading, Pledge of Allegiance, number six.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
This is for $12,587. This is a grant in the county clerk's office for Haba. No action today. We'll bring it back up in 10 days.
Okay. And again, we've got approval of EMS participation in public safety. Well, let's go ahead.
He text said he was going to a call, so I texted him back and said, we can approve it if we need to today, otherwise we'll table it.
Okay.
You know, if it, worse comes to worse, we can come back in the session.
Yeah.
Later on.
Okay. Then we will go to unfinished business, ratification of emergency procedure for rail spur repairs.
So back on September 17th, we had UniPacific did an inspection of the tracks out at Al Valley, the rail spur. They do this periodically and they don't tell us when they're showing up. And if there's an issue that they find, they'll shut the track down right then and there, make it physically impossible to actually use the track. So a serious condition, we have industry that's served by the rail, not daily, but at least could be two to three times a week. So it's a little, kind of go depending on what deliveries are being made. And in fact, there was a delivery that was, a car in Kansas City at that time, and industry that needed it actually had it offloaded onto a truck to bring it down, just for concern that maybe that track wouldn't be open up in time. So it is a serious deal when it happens. Reached out to Capitol Railroad Contracting, they were able to mobilize a crew on site on the 19th, so two days later. Very thankful we have that relationship with them. On the 18th, or actually 17th, we talked to the county commission about the need to do an emergency authorization to do these repairs, which you did, officially did that by email vote on the 18th, working with Jill on all that side of things. And so Capitol Railroad was here on the 19th, it came back, there was some delays in getting UniPacific there to do their flagging on the main line, so they came back on the 23rd to finish. Tracks back in operation like it should be. The final cost of repairs was $16,917.93. And so what we need to do is the commission would vote to ratify the decision to suspend the bidding rules for these emergency repairs. And then Jill suggested that we, we sign the proposal and invoice for that work, just for documentation. And then if you're good with that, I got a few more things to say about the rail. We got a little time, so, but anyway, we need to vote on this first.
I'll make a motion to ratify the emergency procurement for the rail spur, rail spur repairs, which cost $16,917.93.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And thanks, Tim, I do appreciate them getting, responding so quickly.
We're very lucky that they're able to be there as quick as they were there based out of Columbia, so it's pretty handy.
You mentioned we might do some more discussion. I'm curious, the, the product that was on a rail car in Kansas City came by truck.
It did.
Did it come by one truck or four trucks?
Probably at least three.
At least three?
Yeah.
Okay, so because we're often saying that a tanker that sits up there carries enough product that would require four trucks, right?
Yeah, three to four, depends on what it is, yeah.
Okay.
So I did want to talk about trying to not be in this situation again in the future. So Capitol Railroad Contracting, Matthew Bullrath is the private manager or whatever, his brother and another partner actually own the company, so, and he's the one that I normally deal with. They do, they have a bunch of different clients all around where they'll, they'll do routine maintenance work for. And so what I want to do, and I visited with him about, about how to set this up, we would actually bid, put it out for bid, and go have just on-call services and list out all the different types and costs and that kind of thing. And there would probably be a, like a yearly renewal at a certain percent or something, and we would work all that out. And I put it out for bid, accept bids and do based on cost and availability type of thing, like we normally do, where we could more or less select any contractor depending on how quick and all that. So they're obviously going to be the, you know, the easiest to get here when we need them if it's emergency. And not only just emergency situations, but we also really should be doing routine maintenance, and we're not really doing that. Now that we have the transload, it's more than, it's probably tripled the size, the length of track that we have, and there's a lot more cars going down now than what had before, substantially more. So we definitely need to be more proactive. And so what I'll set up is not only will they do repairs, but they also do inspection. So we'll get set up on like a quarterly inspection cycle, not tremendously expensive, but we would have to put that out and see what kind of price we get. And with that, with that happening, then we can get on some of these things before it becomes an emergency and maybe avoid the whole emergency situation in the future. So that's where I'm going. I don't know how long it'll take to get through that process, but I would expect, you know, within the next few months, we'll get something out for bid. So that's where that's going. We didn't really discuss where this money's going to come from to pay for what we just did. I think in the past, it's come out of the sales tax. The, but the question is what side of the sales tax? And I think we've also brought some rock out for ballast in the past that may have come out of 211, which that's probably not supposed to happen. So, and this goes back several years, 10, 10 years ago or more. So that might be part of the future discussion on how we fund this thing going forward. I do know that the goal, and we're going to get there, I don't know when, the goal would be that with the CART coming on, it'll, everything generated revenues would support the maintenance and upkeep of the whole, the whole spur. And then we'll get there. I don't know for sure when, those plans are evolving right now. I mentioned not too long ago, Capital did hire basically a business and development person to focus on primarily the rail. We had Harry attended a Coffee and CART two weeks ago, I believe, out at the site. And had several, what I, some client, or few potential clients were there that I hadn't seen before that showed interest, so it's going to happen. And in talking, the guy's name is Ron Spencer, he came from another rail company, and talking with him, he's very confident that there's a ton of potential out there. So things will start coming together, this and dealing with rail service and everything, that just takes a long time to get through that process, so. But we're definitely going to get there, and ideally, it would support itself where it's not a drain on, not a drain necessarily, but it's not taking additional county resources to cover it. So just an update on where things are with that. I guess as far as where this money comes from, any suggestions, Debbie?
I mean, you could take it out of the 806 sales tax, the court outside, until we determine whether it can be part of this CART fees that may be coming back in to help offset that. I mean, I don't really know off the top of my head all the rules for 211. If transportation includes railroad type of, that could be a legitimate expense within that fund. So we can definitely research all of that.
211 directly attached to CART then?
I don't know where the plans were for CART.
When we built it, it was, it was a sales tax. It was an 807, so the 85% side.
Where we took it from last time we had, because we've had them out there doing emergency work before. Or work in general on the railroad tracks.
I'm going to say probably 807. It's been, it's been a little while since we had, I'm going to say six to seven years probably since the last time this emergency repair thing came up. And I don't think we did any maintenance work on it other than we added some tire replacement when we did the big project.
Where's the CART money going to go to when we start recognizing some revenue from it?
I think it would, I mean, it's...
807.
Maybe neither, maybe a GR.
We'll have to figure out the, how it's set up statutorily, how, what's the, how are we getting that money? What's the association?
Sounds like an auditorium.
Yes.
And a guy likes a number, that may be a commissioner, maybe, maybe.
It is his decision, yes.
Right. I'm not saying we did anything wrong in the past of where the money came from, and I think, you know, this, this is now going to be something that's going to actually generate some revenues coming in and, you know, now it's, it's a whole different ballgame now than it was before, so.
And the insurance for that type of coverage liability has been coming out of GR since the very beginning of the spur.
No, we already have our...
We definitely need to figure it out.
Sure, so we're...
Yeah, so, I don't know if y'all have a recommendation on how to do it right now or if you want to look at it and then...
Yeah, I'll have to look at it and everything.
It's coming from county coffers and somewhere, so I think that we can keep track of it would be the best thing.
I, I think we ought to be able to look at our citizens and say, as a result of this project, we've received this kind of revenue and spent this kind of expenses. And so that kind of lends itself to... And so that kind of lends itself to the 807 approach or not to mess around with GR with this thing.
Yeah, whether it needs a separate accounting fund or just lines of expense and revenue, that's things we need to look at.
Yeah, stick into the CART for the funding.
And we, we do, we're under a one-year operating agreement with Capital, which is going to come due around the first of the year. And we set it up with a one-year, knowing that we're not sure how things are going to play out over the year and wanted to see operating wise how things go. So I think we'll know more going into the next one, and maybe it's another one year, maybe it's a multi-year or something, so. But as far as operational side of things out there, I think it's running very smoothly. They're doing a great job and, you know, it's, it seems to be very good. I mean, they had the thing out there two weeks ago and a lot of, seems like a lot of interest out there, so. That's all I have.
Okay, well, we don't have any Eric. We might go into closed session and what did he say?
Having our back maybe.
Okay, but we might do our closed session. We can always come back into open session if Eric's here, and then hopefully maybe he'll respond if we, if there's nothing critical, we can table until next week or we can do a, a standalone, just a quick commission meeting later on this week, so. Let's, I would entertain the motion to go into closed session. Pursuant to Section 610.021 of the Revised Statutes of Missouri, the commission will go into closed session to discuss the following personnel issues under Section 610.021 subsection 15. Second, roll call please.
Sam.
Yes.
Harry.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Okay.
You're going? Okay, we will go back into open session. It's Tuesday, October 14th, 2025, and we have approval and signing of an EMT clinical agreement with Lincoln University.
Yes, good morning. Sorry for my tardiness. But this is a MOU with Lincoln University that allows their EMT students to perform clinicals on our ambulance. I think we have a couple of different MOUs with various organizations, the university and some others. No cost to us, no changes in anything that we're doing, so just ask that we approve and sign this today. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Good partnership.
I'll give it to the other one.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve and sign the EMT clinical agreement with Lincoln University.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, then we have approval of EMS participation in the public safety explorer post.
Yeah, so I don't have anything formal here, but, you know, I know we've had a couple of different conversations over the past few months about an explorer post, and through a group effort, we've kind of decided that a public safety explorer post is the best way to go forward. And, you know, that's representative of police, fire, EMS and emergency management. And, and the big thing there is that it takes the burden and spreads it out amongst all four agencies. One of the things that we talked about early on was who was going to be the host agency, because there are some insurance and some other commitments that goes along with that, and I don't think the city or county was really in a position to do that. So Lincoln University actually came on board and became the host agency. So this is a program for 14 to 21-year-old folks who are interested in exploring various public safety career paths. They'll come in, do some training and some other, you know, job-related functions with each one of the agencies, and hopefully it'll be a good recruitment tool. The city has formalized this with a resolution and some other things. I don't necessarily know that we need to go that in depth, so just asking for permission to participate. The only real cost to us will be some staff hours, but most of the folks will be participating or salaried anyway, so I don't really see any impact on what we're doing. So just looking for some support and the blessing, and then happy to answer any questions.
I think it's a great program. I just, I was getting emails where they wanted Cole County to be the sponsoring organization. I think we can do that, so this is, that Lincoln would step forward and do this, I think that's wonderful.
Yeah, absolutely.
Good, would it do, do we need to vote to approve the participation then or...
Yeah, I would just ask for a motion for, to participate. I don't have an agreement or anything.
Do you want to do that?
Yeah, as a farmer scout.
Sorry.
I'll make a motion to participate with Lincoln University being the sponsoring agency in the explorer post. Period. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it for flexibility today, so.
Hey, Don, Harry needs to correct the closed session citation.
I misspoke earlier when I said 13, subsection 13. I meant to say subsection 3. Okay.
Three, okay.
Thank you, don't let it happen again.
I think that was Eric.
How about another day motion to stand at recess? Motion to stand at recess until 4:30 PM. Second, all in favor?